I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Loews, can you read the statement of certification of the meeting?
Yes. Certification of the meeting, I can now retire from the sunshine floor.
Please call a roll.
Benira.
Here.
This is Inorgarada, here.
Sure.
Councilman Kennedy.
Here.
Mr. Conti.
Here.
Mr. Walsh.
Here.
Mrs. Shaw.
Here.
Mr. Mettichney. Mr. Bowe.
Here.
Mr. Senabria.
Here.
Mr. Reekdo.
Here.
I'll come to your person. I'll send you the bill. Here.
Mr. Yazi.
Here.
Mr. Yedlin.
Do we have a motion for the approval in a minute for the 17th number 14, 2017 meeting?
Second.
Loews, call a roll.
Mr. Benira.
Yes.
Mrs. Inorgarada.
Yes.
Councilman Kennedy.
Yes.
Mr. Conti.
Yes.
Mr. Walsh.
Yes.
Mrs. Shaw.
Take no pardon.
Mr. Boe.
Yes.
Mr. Senabria.
Yes.
Mr. Reekdo.
Yes.
Chairman's comments. Just to give members a little update, next month in November is the legal municipalities. If anybody could attend, it's a good opportunity to attend the training sessions. If you need any information, I'm sure Loews could provide the dates and stuff for you guys. Correspondence and payment of bills, are there any questions or comments? If not, under all business, we have memorialized PB 2017-05-187 Main Street Resolution. What was called a quote?
Mr. Benira.
Yes.
Mrs. Inorgarada.
Yes.
Mr. Councilman Kennedy.
Yes.
Mr. Conti.
Yes.
Mr. Walsh.
Yes.
Mrs. Shaw.
Take no pardon.
Mr. Boe.
Yeah.
Mr. Senabria.
Yes.
Mr. Reekdo.
Yes.
We have PB 2017-07, Bellev JNS Holding LLC, 2012-2016 Bellev Avenue.
Mr. Chairman, I represent the applicant in that matter, and based on the long agenda, I'd like to request an adjournment to your next regularly scheduled meeting in the board.
Very well.
And can that be done without further notice?
Yes, yes.
Thank you, and that will be...
We'll just ask you to wave any of the time here.
Absolutely, I wave the time if necessary. So, that'll be at seven o'clock, second Thursday of November.
Correct, and tell everybody again that there will be no further notice.
Okay, thank you.
We have redevelopment study and preliminary investigation report for 78-102 Washington Avenue, PB 2017-04.
Mr. Chairman, I'm Don Mizell, representing CME. This report that we're referring to tonight is actually submitted in July.
We're going to swear you in again, please.
Very good.
Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give will hold true to the number of the truth and what you got?
I do.
Thank you.
So, just briefly, I'll review the process, how it got to this point. City Council authorized a study of this area, which I think you're all familiar with, now on the corner of Washington and William Street. It's a former used car parcel, it's four lots altogether, it's six tenths of an acre. And again, this study was commissioned, or was dated July 2017. We've heard it several times, but tonight you can make the determination of whether this is an area in need of redevelopment. So, that's what I'm here to discuss. If you have any questions, please stop me. You've been through this before, you've designated several areas, so I'll assume that you're familiar with the process. Basically, this parcel has to meet one of eight criteria that the statutes lay out. And in our opinion, it meets four of those eight, and I'll touch on those just briefly. Criteria A deals with the fact that the building is unsafe, substandard, dilapidated, or obsolete. What you have is a very small center block structure, no power. It's been abandoned for some time, so in our opinion, the fact that it's abandoned and hasn't been used for some time means that criteria. Criteria B is very similar, it's a vacant building and disrepair, therefore, criteria B is one we feel needs to criteria. It's an obsolete parcel, which is referenced in criteria D when I say obsolete. The current zone, I believe, is BG, which does not allow auto sales, so in the miracle that somebody wanted to put an auto-related business there, they could not. So, the zoning for what was there is obsolete, new zoning, it's going to be recommended. So, again, we use the D criteria. And the final criteria is something that we refer to as the smart growth criteria. I would refer to it as the good planning criteria. It would be good planning to redevelop this site according to standards that are listed in the statute. So, in a nutshell, that is what we're asking, is that you, as a planning board, make a recommendation to council. It's important to note, this is considered a non-condemnation redevelopment zone. That means that the council will not have the power to take this plan from a current component.
No way.
In the past, where there was not that option, you know, is that a condemnation component, this does not work, and is not recommended. Any questions about the process, about the study?
Why does it have to be a piece of property in need of redevelopment?
Why does it have to...
Yeah, why do we have to prove this and send it to the council?
Well, because they've asked you to. They initiated this.
So, what's their benefit out of this? What do they have out of it?
Benefit typically is that, once it's designated as a redevelopment area, there are incentives to the owner, to the developer, designated developer, in the form of tax breaks or redevelopment.
I need a tax break myself.
That's all negotiated outside of the realm of whether this is an area or not.
I know.
Does any other board members have any questions?
This site that we're talking about, this is the same site that had been approved by the zoning board, and its timeline of expiration, I believe, was June 26.
It was this summer.
It was this summer, and then we met regarding it in July. And I believe at the time, in part of the presentation, this was discussed as being abandoned. Correct? Was it discussed as being abandoned?
You say abandoned, and the plan is essentially abandoned, because it's no longer valid. It expired. Whatever was approved prior, that timeline has expired, so there's nothing that's approved for that site.
And the owner, the ownership has changed?
The ownership has changed from what it was several years ago. I know, I met the owner coming in this evening, if you'd like to ask him. But, to be honest, it really doesn't pertain to whether this area is in need of redevelopment or not.
Oh, I...
It's a separate issue.
The only reason I'm asking whether it pertains or not, because the previous, it was during the time of an owner, when there was a proposal to the zoning board. And that's the reason why it has to be given.
But, again, that approval has now expired, it doesn't apply to this investigation. You could not build that project now regardless whether you approve or not approve, that's expired.
I believe we received a communication from a lawyer, between Mr. DiCapolo, regarding some type of a six-month extension. So, I think that that needs to be brought up as part of this.
Yeah, and then, Mrs. Shaw is correct, as a matter of fact, we stopped the process in order to find out the status of the application under the Board of Adjustment. And since that time, two letters were received. One went to the Chairman of the Board of Adjustment, and the second one went to our construction official and zoning officer, Mr. DiLorenzo, dated September 27, 2017. And with the Chairman's position, may we have Mr. DiLorenzo read this letter into the record, please.
As you may be aware, I represent 78-102 Washington Avenue, Residence LLC. You may recall that on September 12, 2017, we made a request for extension of the site approved on the above property prior to the planning board meeting this month. As it appears that this has caused some confusion with regards to redevelopment, respectfully, we draw our request for an extension at this time with prejudice and preserve our rights under 40, 55D, 1052.
Thank you, sir.
So, does it become that the extension requested of the zoning board, anything withdrawn?
Yes, and the Chairman is here to clarify that.
If you want to swear me in.
I think we can take your representation, because this letter was also read into the record at the last meeting. So, I believe that it is now appropriate for the board to go forward and make a determination whether or not this area is in need of redevelopment. And I also believe that it was appropriate for the board to adjourn the matter until this issue was clarified.
Well, we also requested to find out, since we assumed it was abandoned at that point, about taxes, have the taxes, can we find anything that they're paid or not paid?
I did not look that up, no. But, again, that would not pertain to whether it did some...
No, but the board had requested a couple of items, and he said he couldn't find to look into it, and I didn't. I don't see anything, of course.
The ownership is what I looked into, and the owner is here to explain how it's transpired from what it was to today. As far as paying taxes, I did not look up the tax certificate.
What would be the difference, besides the tax, potential tax abatements, what would be the difference in the proposed development at that site?
What is the difference?
What would be the difference between what was proposed and just tabled, or, you know, not followed through on?
Right.
And is there a new proposed development, would it be the same development?
I would say no. But, what I did do is, right now, it's in the BG, commercial residential mixed-use zone, so only those uses that are in that zone would be permitted. Business, professional offices, and corporate offices, all retail, sales, and services, except for auto lot repair, mixed-use commercial buildings in accordance with certain criteria. That you have a hotel listed as a conditional use, so all of those uses would be permitted at that site, regardless of what you can use. So, those are the uses that are permitted. And the idea behind designating an area redevelopment, you can then come up with specific criteria for that site. And your question, I think, is, are the criteria going to be the same? And as a planner, I can tell you, they probably won't be, because hopefully you'll ask me to come up with a plan for that site, or our firm to do that, and we'll work with you to come up with what you think the best standards are for it.
I mean, to me, sitting on the board, I don't have a problem with it. If the tool that the town needs to enhance development is tax abatement, that's great. The only thing I don't like, in a way, is that we kind of outline what we're going to put there, and then we never wind up going down that road, because we don't know what the potential, the government wants to do in terms of apartments, or stores, or what types of things, because we've gone through it a few times. I think the town probably does need support to enhance development, and tax abatements, obviously, are one of the reasons. I don't really, I don't really follow through on all the criteria. It seems that you have just a very small guard shack out there, really. It's not an abandoned structure, so to speak.
When you look at it from the criteria that you're supposed to look at, yes, it's an abandoned structure. That's it. What I've learned in doing redevelopment work in New Jersey the last 10 or 12 years is that you can really make a difference by putting new criteria on a site. What I've done is always held the developers to a higher standard. You'll hear me, if I come back and talk to you some more, I'll talk about rebuilding, standards, energy-efficient standards, proximity to transit. All of those things come into play when we develop a plan for that site, even though it's only six tenths of an acre. Again, you can get those mixed uses that you're desiring with a higher, holding the developers to a higher standard. So, that's what I like to do with these documents, once you move them along, and hopefully you'll get to see that.
You stated previously that you're going to be recommending soon a new zoning condition?
Well, what happens is, if you designate it as an area in need of redevelopment, the council says we agree, typically what they do is then ask that a plan be developed for that parcel.
I understand, but it sounded like you already had something in mind.
No. What I was saying is, I don't have in mind putting back exactly what has just expired. That's what I was saying. I'm sure there are elements that might be considered, but to rubber stamp what was there previously approved, not what we're going to see. You may see, you know, I would think a mixed-use building would be nicer, just off the top of my head, but not whatever the criteria was that was approved by the zoning board.
I just have a little bit of a problem with it. It's been 20 years now we've been saying we were building something there, and it's never happened.
Excuse me, Tori Ward, can you take your conversation outside? Yeah, do us a favor, so we can hear what's going on. Thank you very much.
My, may I? My concern is that the project went before zoning, because it wasn't in a designated zone at the time for residential. Therefore, we needed, it needed to go before zoning for an appeal, for an approval, which expired in June. Fortunately, or unfortunately, we're dealing with the fact that there was a misuse of, by whoever owned it, or currently owns it at the time, that was deemed to be inappropriate, though it had functioned that way for years, while, two years ago, the zoning board proceeded to say, though that area was not designated because of the appeal and the project, eventually, after a number of weeks, the zoning board approved. So, that's what I find to be confusing. It was a car lot, but it wasn't supposed to be a car lot. But, as we remember, by the way, we've always had nothing but a string of car lots at that part of Washington Avenue. But, it wasn't approved. In the meantime, the zoning board approves an area that was not designated as commercial, but it was a BG, not residential. So, they go before the zoning board, the zoning board approves, but now that's run out, so now it's coming before us for a mixed use, which I'm not, I'm not in opposition to mixed use. That's not my issue. Nor am I against development or redevelopment, but this whole situation is... What's the difference between a six-month extension within zoning? Or all of a sudden, why is it coming to us? And it would be wonderful to see something, rather than unfortunately, something like the Lincoln Hotel on Washington Avenue. You know, we don't want something that's in hourly rates, so certainly we would want something respectable. But, given the amount of land that we have there, and so many people are talking about saturation, I don't know, I'm just confused by this whole thing. I need more clarity. And it's not, I'm not criticizing in any way our desire for a greener approach to things. I'm just, it's the whole package that is confusing me, that's all.
Just to clarify, residential use is allowed at that location, it has to be part of a mixed-use building. And the density for that is only up to eight units per acre, so you've got six tenths of an acre. Conceivably, you could put five residential units there under the current zoning. I'm sure the request back two years ago was a lot more units than that.
And it was approved.
And it was approved. So, but to be clear, residential is permitted at this location now, as part of BG zoning, as part of a mixed-use development.
But not during the time of the application two years ago?
Yeah, no, it was then.
It was, or it wasn't?
But, again, you could have only put five units there, at the most.
All right, understood.
Does any other members have a question? We'll open it up to the public, does anybody in the public have a question, this winners?
Jeff Mattingly, 56 Walnut. I've listened to the, I was, I guess, a couple of months ago is when you initially presented this. And basically, the criteria that you were seeking to meet was, you know, very interesting, that it was unsafe now, and it is vacant, well, yes, it's an empty parcel of land. And that you pointed to the fact that vehicles were cutting through it, because I guess there's no chain, you know, marking that property as do not cross. And anything on a corner will be used today as a pass-through, it's a level line, and people cut through it. So, I mean, that was a real reach, in my opinion. And obsolete, it's a vacant, it was misused. There was never any zoning allowed for used car dealership, although it was illegally used that way and grandfathered in, so there it sat. Now, then it was considered possibly for senior housing, I believe, going backward, is that what it is? And it, but 80 units per acre is the mixed-use concept that we're throwing around here on six tenths of an acre? I mean, that's a lot of density. And in recent times, this board and tax abatements have been offered to the Soho Hospital and other properties that are now going to bring a lot of residential to Belleville, as it's innovated the entire county, neighboring towns all around us. We're looking at what it's costing the taxpayers in terms of children entering the school system, and the requirement for services to be expanded as this population base continues to expand. And now, the idea that incentives to the developer are to seek tax abatement, to add more residential, exacerbating all the problems of a small town with very limited access roads going through it, which now, I live one block off of Belleville Avenue. I can't get out of my street in the morning. I'm right also one block from Garden Avenue. It's a constant flow of traffic during rush hours, it don't allow you to move. I mean, we're pretty much coming down to right turn only during business hours. It's really becoming, you know, impossible to negotiate your own town that is supposedly a residential town, historically, that accommodates a certain percentage of population in its infrastructure. Well, the infrastructure is so stretched, board, and so stretched out now, that it simply isn't accommodating the present density.
Sir, would you mind if our expert responds to some of your comments, please?
Certainly.
Which one would you like me to respond to?
Density is a big aspect.
There's no density proposed here, sir. What we're saying is, the density at the project before was about 80 units, which would put it at 160 if it had been approved, whatever.
Right, as opposed to eight units.
Not even eight.
Right.
Not even eight, less than eight, is what's permitted now.
But you did mention just now that you would consider, you know, re, once again, introducing that former plan that now...
No, that's not what I said at all, sir.
Did you just say that?
No, it sounded like that. No, you said that wasn't part of the, this is just a study. This redevelopment study doesn't have a use yet.
But the study is basically the incentive idea that tax abatements would be sought, that would transfer that tax requirement of any residential onto the existing tax base.
Well, let me just say this. This board has no jurisdiction about tax abatements, and we're looking at an hour, wish you could help us on this. The issue is, does this property satisfy sufficient criteria under the redevelopment statute for this board to make a recommendation to the mayor and town council to look into it further as a redevelopment area? There is no zoning at this time, there is no density at this time that we're looking at.
There's BG zoning, correct?
Would you like to...
That is correct.
So, that is a commercial application zoning on that property now?
That's zoning now, but having this as a redevelopment zone would give everybody an idea.
And I'm speaking to redevelopment. I'm suggesting to you that you not find this an area in need of redevelopment, considering that recent times have shown commercial development on that block, more than half of that block, moving south toward York. On that side of the street has been developed in market forces from contractors who sought and found reason to develop that block commercially, and which gives us taxes, as a business, does not put children into the system, no residential. And that's the present zoning, and I believe it should stay that way, because, you know, the mixed use, it turns out to be a 600-square-foot, you know, building on the first floor, and then five stories of residential.
Because we have some other applications, we're going to put you down as against the idea of redevelopment.
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Well, I'd like to finish, I can't continue with my own words, so do you have to shut me up?
You have to ask me questions.
I control it.
Okay.
Over what I testified to, that's what you're supposed to.
We have to really keep it in, you can ask him questions as to what his testimony is, and you know we're not trying to shut anyone off.
Can smart growth include the restriction to strictly BG, where we develop commercially?
Smart growth is one of the eight criteria mentioned, and it's part of the statute where it lists certain items that are... I can read them to you if you'd like, but it's the one that I like least, because it's the most ambiguous. I mean, it's not very clear. But let me say what those are. So, what a smart growth criteria does, it encourages the following. Mixed land uses, compact clustered community design, range of housing choice and opportunity, walkable neighborhoods, distinctive attractive communities offering a sense of place, open space, farmland, and scenic resource preservation, future development strengthened and directed to existing communities, a provision of a variety of transportation choices, making development decisions predictable, fair, and cost-effective. And the last one is encouraging citizen and stakeholder participation in development decisions. So, if the site offers those opportunities, it qualifies under this smart growth criteria. So, and to the effect that it does, basically, this lot is a gateway to the downtown area. I walked it today, I actually walked down to Mill Street, walked back. It's got a fairly high elevation, if a four or five-story building is there, you'd have nice views. But, again, it meets the criteria in that it offers opportunity to provide some of those items that I just listed.
Well, once again, I'd like to state to the board that what we need is businesses that bring us rateables, not drain and more tax requirement to compensate for any residential that would be basically necessitated by a desire for tax abatements.
The town still gets a share of taxes, though, you know that, right?
Well, the existing tax base is what picks up any differential. So, either you pay the freight based on the taxes required, you know, per square foot, like is existing, or there's any relief whatsoever, and that, you know, those services and any children, that all comes back to the existing tax base who has to compensate.
There's another thing, though. Very often, I see that whole idea put before the planning board as if we have some say in what type of abatement, or how much the abatement will be, or how much the current taxes paid on that vacant lot are compared to what they would pay even if they hadn't abated.
Well, finding an area in need of redevelopment is your business, though.
Well, that is, and I think that's a good tool to rezone a certain area so that we can get some development done. But the right board to be in front of, if you want to argue about an abatement, would be the city, the town council.
It will certainly do that, but for existing zoning.
Participating.
But the existing BG zoning for business is exactly what it should be. And so, to alter that by this board considering it as changing the zoning to accommodate the developer who's seeking tax abatements is, I believe, not in the town's best interest.
And listen, we are all taxpayers, and I'm not opposed personally, opposed to some incentive for development. But that's not this board's concern, you know what I mean? And I think we shouldn't be voting for or against development based on a tax abatement, that's very different.
No, but residential development is very expensive and exacerbates the problems that are inconsiderate.
With this, too, because I've been a few years on the board, I keep hearing every time there's a residential development, how the schools are, we have increased enrollment, but I've yet to see any proof of that, from anybody.
Well, it's yet to land. Well, it's yet to land. How many apartments are going to...
Well, my point is, are there really increases in the enrollment in the schools?
Certainly is. In the township, the neighboring town has an additional 1,000 children entering the district now. They have a $70 million bond referendum that they're looking at.
Well, part of that is due to lack of investment for decades, too, in these towns, where that's an education issue.
No, no, there's a thousand new heads. Did you hear that? A thousand new heads are entering another district.
The town of Belleville isn't going to stay stagnant in a world population that's growing, so we should kind of plan for that.
We're not stagnant.
We shouldn't be.
Yes, we are.
Yes, we are.
Yes, we are.
What, you're not, you're not taking this into account?
Check, check the Bureau of Statistics.
What about the, what about the additional housing that you've authorized that has yet to come?
We're really getting off, we're really getting off subject here.
The point is, is that our school district is not growing. The data's there, public data. The town population is not growing. In fact, it is decreasing.
It is not.
Yes, it is. It's not an opinion, it's a fact. That's all I'm saying, Jeff. It's not an opinion, it's a fact. I've done the research, you can do the research, to suggest that we are overcrowded and anything that we develop is inappropriate because overcrowding, it's not true. Where are our schools overcrowded?
I'm sorry, but the mayor just recently stated, we're now a town of 37,000. We're traditional 36, recently. So, now, according to other studies that have been brought before the boards and the council.
Well, I've looked at, at official statistics for the last six to seven years, we are stagnant as a population and the school system as well. And that's data, and it's not my opinion. Those are the numbers.
But when these houses come online, I'm just, we do have a lot of housing that has been authorized, so data is coming online in the near future. That is going to produce, and certainly, the traffic is horrendous in this area, and it's very tight. This is a town of 2.3 square miles when you remove the county property. 37,000 people.
We got to move on, Mr. Mattingly.
Go right ahead.
Anybody else, Mr. Frank Antoni?
I'm sorry, Chuck, I forgot your name.
You can call me Don, remember? That's right.
Don, talking about that car lot, which, I'm not sure, is it illegal?
It was probably called a non-conforming use. It was probably there for a long time before it closed, and now, since it's been closed for a year, can't reopen as a car lot.
Right, but are you aware that it was there legally?
Well, I did not go back that far, sir.
Well, I can tell you, because I was involved, it was an original car lot that goes way back, one lot.
Before zoning?
Then it expanded, the owner allowed to expand it. And this is personal information. I personally made a complaint to Mr. Di Lorenzo that the owner was using the corner lot of William, the bigger lot, to expand his car lot. Mr. Di Lorenzo gave him a violation. He went before the zoning board, and the zoning board approved him to use that. So, that car lot was not illegal. It was legal to prove, one was grandfathered in because it was there for 50 years ago when I came to Belleville, and before that. And the other portions were allowed by the zoning board. In fact, that same owner, that original owner, owned a four-unit apartment house with four stores underneath. It burned in the 90s. I have the videos of all that fire. And then, he expanded the car used there. But then he went before the zoning board, got approval to make the whole lot. So, just so the record shows, this was not an illegal use of it. He went through the channels after Mr. Di Lorenzo violated him.
If I use the term illegal, then that was inappropriate, but it's a non-conforming use based on the zoning that's there today, the BG zone.
Yes, we agree. That's it. But I just want the record to show, because Ms. Shaw, I believe she mentioned, too, that it was illegal and shouldn't have been there at all. But it was legal, the zoning board approved it. And in regards to Mr. Conti, about the, you believe the town, you know, needs the tools to redevelop. I don't know how long you've been in town, but are you aware of Lower Washington Avenue? Are you aware of it five years ago? Are you aware of it when Obama killed the car industry? We had nice Big Old Motors? Big Old Motors closed up, not because they wanted to, not because they didn't have business. I bought cars, my father bought all his cabs over there. He was thrown out. But what happened? Within a year or two, a developer took it over, and he built. He took it over, cleaned it up. Family Dollar, not Joe's Hardware Store, a national chain built there. No pilot, didn't have to be declared an area in need of redevelopment. What's next door? Popeye's Chicken, again, a national chain. They didn't need redevelopment authority, didn't have to come before the planning board, you know, to get their approval. Next to that, you have a nice big laundromat, big commercial laundromat at all. No pilots, no authorization area needed redevelopment. You go to Cleveland Street, you got Solar Domeno, a nice restaurant, which is packed, you can't get in there on the weekends and all that. No pilot, didn't have to be declared an area in need of redevelopment. The second house in from Cleveland Street burnt down. They got permission by, I believe, the zoning board to rebuild. While they were building it, about a year, year and a half ago, it was signed all over. The first all-green building in passing county. We didn't declare an area in need of redevelopment or nothing like that. The branch of manor where I got married, you're familiar with that? That was abandoned, abandoned, he went out of business, right? The Dollar Tree comes in, another national company, demolished the build, branch of manor built. We didn't need an area in need of redevelopment to that. Right next to there, you know, the old Ledwood Auto Body, a building in disrepair, my friend owned it. He was in his 80s, he lost it to foreclosure. My other friend, the Immerschke Building, he has empty cars that he rents to the movies, millions of dollars in there. I negotiated the sale without commissioning, I got my two friends together. The one friend bought it from him, put his check on floor. Have you been in there? Millions of dollars' worth of cars in there. No redevelopment, area in need of redevelopment. It's now the Immerschke Building, a beautiful building, if you bothered to look at that. You go up and down, there's Dr. Sidaldi in that old gas station right across the street from where Big Old Motors. No area in need of redevelopment, you know, we didn't need all this, no pilot, none of these big, big developments need pilots. We're getting, you know, I complimented Councilman Kennedy because we're getting a little sick and tired of these tax abatements and pilots and areas in need of redevelopment. And the reason why you can tell, and attorney can say, this is not your purview, but you are the tool. The town council cannot declare a pilot or a tax abatement unless you folks, the planning board, declares it an area in need of redevelopment. So, that's what's going on here, and that's where we're at.
We recommend it, Mr. Frank Antoni.
Now, I don't want to take much more time...
We recommend it. It's the council that declares it. We make a recommendation.
Exactly.
Yeah, well, you said we don't declare it. We don't declare it.
But you were, Mr. Mattingly, you were making it appear you were ejected to him, that you have nothing to do with this. You do, you are part of that tool. The town council cannot give a tax abatement or a pilot unless the planning board declares it an area in need of redevelopment.
Unless we recommend it, right?
Again, and what I'm telling you, and I will, I have the whole map of the two blocks coming from north. We had tons of development, next to Carl, I think you opened Belleville, next to Carl's Appliances, remember that? Gentleman bought the old Tiger Hardware Store, renovated, put apartments, then he comes back and he gets approval to build three townhouses in the backyard. So, I was against it, but fine, he built them. No pilot, no area in need of development, he did it legally. So, I'm, this is, I'll sum up at the end there. This is questioning the witnesses. But to the criteria, Don.
Yes.
You use criteria A. The buildings, let me read it. According to the, and I go back before the area in need of redevelopment statute, you quote the BLIGHT statute, if you recall that. So, I fought the town in that when they wanted to do it, and we won back then, so I'm familiar. It says, "The general value of buildings are subject to unsafe, unsanitary, dilapidate or possess any characteristic, so lacking light airspace, as be conducive to wholesome living." Is that what the statute says? And you use criteria A. Number one, that dilapidated building you call was an office for used car lots, 10 by 20. It's the size of my kitchen, and it wasn't a dwelling unit.
And it meets the criteria. It's dilapidate, it's deteriorate, it's unoccupied.
You know, words, words are important. It says conducive to wholesome living, right? Nobody was living in there. It was an office for a used car lot. And you also use criteria B, the discontinuance of use of the buildings. It wasn't voluntary, the tenant was evicted. He just recently, like I stated earlier, had gotten permission to use the entire parcel for cars. So, he was addicted, it didn't happen at this because of the downgrading of the township and all, nobody wanted to use the site and all that. So, I don't believe that qualifies either if you consider the real facts of what's going on here in Belleville. D, you're saying that D qualifies. The dilapidation, the overcrowding of the property, you've got over half an acre and you've got 200-square-foot building. Where's that overcrow, over, excessive land coverage? Where's excessive land coverage? It's vacant land, other than that building there. What really is there, it's owner neglect, and it's lack of code enforcement on there. One of the pictures show, there's a bunch of broken glass there. That's not an area in need of redevelopment. That means even the building department didn't see it, wasn't told of the problem, it's just a matter of code enforcement. If he gets a letter, usually, you know, like you see on contract tenants, get it all the time, the building department give 10 days to clean it up. So, that's not an area in need of redevelopment, that's code enforcement. And finally, you're using criteria H, smart growth, which I hope the public understands, this was something the politicians in Trenton added on just to accommodate developers. It really has nothing to do with the original BLIGHT statute. This is another scam that perpetrated on the people in New Jersey. It's smart growth, fine. If you want to use the smart growth criteria, well, it's already proven that that area, the zoning board approved it for smart growth, allowing eighty units to there. So, once again, there was no areas, no reason to declare this an area in need of redevelopment. All of those four criteria are all fawning ones, and Don, I sympathize with you because you mustered the courage to pick it up here and really stretch these four criteria to try to make it appear there. But if you're good people who live in Belleville, and I thank again Councilman Kennedy, I helped Peter against this, and Mrs. Shaw, you had some concerns with this, and you're very puzzled why this approved project, and by the way, it was approved three times. It was approved in January of '06, in May of '07, and then in '15, a year and a half ago.
I think it was the Frank Antoni, one of the reasons it was never done was because without encouragement with redevelopment, it wasn't financially sensible to do it. And that's why the building, it's been sitting there vacant for all these years. And I think the council wants to see something put there. We don't need all that vacant land on Washington Avenue. If someone wanted to put a warehouse or a commercial building, if it was financially viable, I think they would have did it. So, we're trying to have a tool to get positive development into our town, to bring more taxes into our town. That's an empty lot. I don't know what they're paying, but I'm sure it's minimal what they're paying. And whatever goes there is going to pay substantially more, even with a pilot program or tax abatement, it'll pay substantially more than what's being paid now.
Mr. Mattingly, maybe you weren't paying attention. All that development and the lower two blocks are what, the worst blocks are what?
Even the Harrison or Carney, all the redevelopment's going on in there, around the gas station, around the new stadium, all of, all of, that's all redevelopment.
I work in some, I got family there, you know, with their taxes have gone through the roof because of development?
They didn't have development with their taxes paid.
But let's stick to the issue here. That whole area has been redeveloped without being declared an area of redevelopment. So, if this owner really wants to make money, instead of making money and let the taxpayers subsidize him, he can, and he'll sell. Everybody's doing business down there.
Where?
At the Lower Washington Avenue. Family Dollar, the Dollar Tree, Popeye's Chicken, my friend owns those other cars, the doctor's office, in fact, I get calls three, four times a week from the doctor's office, because one of our phone numbers is different. I get calls for his office all the time, he's very busy. But, so, there's no reason to declare it an area in need of redevelopment because that...
One difference between the developments you mentioned, a lot of them were existing structures that were renovated. There's a, we are crying to renovate an existing structure, the car dealership, the dollar store, but the dollar store, because of its condition, was almost in construction. But a lot of the things you're talking about are renovations. This isn't a renovation.
Who are you talking about renovations?
The dealership.
Bigelow was renovated, Bigelow was renovated.
And he put an addition, made a big parking lot, more parking that they need, it's really parking, the branch of manor was demolished.
That was a renovation.
Right? These here, but this can be done. And the proof that it can be done, because it wasn't proved.
But it wasn't built, it wasn't built.
It wasn't, well, look, you declared school one area in need of redevelopment, it was approved to 16 units, he never built. It was approved 36 units right across from school one and Rucker Street, approved, went through all that, our tax dollars meant to do that, he never built.
Taxpayers' dollars spent to do that? I think the developers paid for any studies.
Yeah, we're paying our town employees to do this. Our building inspector, Mr. Di Lorenzo, has to take the time...
He's got cover of salaries from the developers, but let's move on, let's stick to the...
Well, he did get jobs in the buildings, but there is no reason to declare that. When we have an area, and it was the worst part of Washington Avenue, and in the last few years, it's back, private development. This guy can build private development, and he'll make money. And, by the way, in one of your, Mr. Conti, in there, the, when you do a pilot program, the board of education gets no money. Number one, the pilots usually, it's a much bigger discount, usually about 30% of what the taxes should be. The town gets 95, the municipal government, the county gets 5%. The board of education gets nothing from pilot programs.
That's something that can be worked out.
Well, the point is here, I hope enough of you, I hope enough of you have the courage to know that this is just a deal to give the taxpayers the benefit to make millions of dollars more, and the rest of us, including you, if you're taxpayers or renters, whatever you are, we're going to pay and subsidize these things.
Thank you. Anybody else in the audience have a question of this witness?
Just calling because I got a letter saying that they want to knock down the Reader's Seminaries and put up a 711.
That's been postponed. We moved that to next month, if you'd like to hear that, it's going to be at next...
Why wouldn't they notify us that it was postponed?
At the beginning of the meeting, they made, we made an announcement.
Well, I got the letter two days ago.
Due to how much stuff is on our agenda, they decided to postpone it to next month.
It would be nice if we would let us, you know...
May I just say, this was not the applicant's responsibility. We're running much later than we thought because of this, and that's just not going to be reached tonight, so it's going to be carried to next month, but it was not the applicant's fault in any way.
What time is it? Next month?
At 7 o'clock, second Thursday. Lois, you have the date?
Yes, November 9th.
November 9th?
Yes.
I own the building, 112 unit, you have it right next to it.
Okay, you're welcome to come next month and listen to whatever you have to say.
Okay.
Thank you. You should have been notified at least 10 days before.
I got the letter a few days ago in the mail.
Well, if you can bring it here with a stamp on it.
All right, well, I'm home, I have it.
All right.
Not right, though.
Any other people in the public have a question?
That is November 9th, right?
Yes.
My hearing isn't...
That's okay. If not, we'll close the public portion. Would someone like to make a motion?
Wait, 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 what about testimony? That was the question.
I'm pretty kidding.
Public have a right to give testimony? I mean, I want to give testimony, that's the whole thing. I just want to clear something up, and it has nothing to do with this testimony. That's why I wasn't asking any questions.
Let me ask you this. If you're going to give testimony, then we'll have you sworn, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, I will, I'm sworn.
Yes. We've talked enough about the truth to help you out. Speak, name, please.
Talia Doger Show, E. Grove Street in Belleville, chairman of the zoning board. To make things straight, and Ms. Shaw is a little misunderstood there, she thought it was for a six-month extension. He was asking for a two-year extension. He was asking for, now, the... He was asking for, now, the rule is you can ask for up to three one-year extensions. And technically, this is expired, but not forever. I'm going to tell you why. For up to those three years ending, he can come anytime asking for an extension, and it goes retroactive to when this allegedly or, or technically expired. So really, there's three more years here where he can come. However, if the case is decided as an area in need of redevelopment, it comes out of the zoning board's jurisdiction and goes into your jurisdiction and the council's jurisdiction. The only time it would come back before us is if they propose something and it's rejected by both the planning board, or it's approved by the planning board and rejected by the council. Then he could come back for a hearing before the zoning board because it's not being approved what he wants to put. And then it would come back before us.
And ask for a variance.
And ask for a variance, exactly. And Mr. Frank Antoni was right, there was a variance given for the parking lot. And he's also right that the person was thrown out. The person that was, owned the property was leasing it to the person who had the used car lot. And they didn't extend the lease and let him go because they wanted to build this project. And that's how it was. And I know as of two thousand fifteen, the person who owns the property now was a part owner. He ended up selling it after that. Well, actually not selling it, he bought the full hundred percent of the property. He was a part owner. Whatever he was a part owner in two oh five, I'm not sure, but as of two years ago, he was definitely a part owner. And then he bought up his, bought out his other apartment. That's how it all worked. Okay? So if there's any questions, you could ask me. But that's how this fell into place. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else in the public have testimony they'd like to give? Not, we'd like to close the public portion. Someone like to make a motion to accept the recommendation of the redevelopment study, declaring this an area in need of redevelopment? Someone make a motion?
Someone.
Second?
Second.
Lois, call a roll?
Mr. Vanila?
Yes.
This is Anorada.
No.
Councilman Kennedy?
No.
Mr. Conti?
No.
Mr. Walsh?
No.
Mrs. Shore?
No.
Mr. Bowman?
No.
Mr. Sinabria?
Yes.
Ms. Rico?
Under new business, we have update master plan and amend the zoning ordinance.
Me also. This evening I brought copies to all of you, gave them to Mr. DiMaranzo, but we will give them to you for distribution. Rather than print copies of these documents, Mr. Graff, if you would like me to email you either the master plan update or the ordinance changes, put your name, print it, and I will send it to you tomorrow. You don't have to. Anyone who wants to do that, you can pass it along. If you don't have it, then I have one, please.
So what are you going to talk about now?
So, well, what I want to talk about is that...
We don't have it.
You don't, you have, you have it?
I have it, if you're going to talk about it. I don't want that. I want it before you talk about it.
Okay, that's fine, folks. But what I've asked for is that a public hearing be held on the ninth. Now that you have it, you have a month to review it, the public has a month to review it rather than me talk about it now.
All right.
Because it is, it is somewhat complex, but hopefully, two documents should support each other.
Well, we'll see what happens when we get it.
But again, if, if you're on the planning board and you'd like an electronic copy, it would be much easier for me to process your comments. As this was Ms. Shore, when she commented on, she was on the steering committee, so the comments were very easy to incorporate when I had to write in electronic mail. So I would, I only have a few email addresses for you. I don't want to text you on your cell phone. If you would give me your email addresses, I would be glad to email these documents to you. Because there will be revisions, and to just print forty pages of documents that we're going to throw away because they need to be revised, just doesn't make sense. So that's, that's what I'm requesting. You have the documents as of today. I've asked the public if they want the documents.
We have them, but we don't have them.
You have them, but you don't have them. That is correct.
We don't have them.
So, again, on, on the ninth is, is the time for me to expound on the contents, and I'll have your feedback, and hopefully it will be productive and concise.
Well, I hope we, I hope we don't get them on the ninth.
No matter, they're in Frank's office right now. And again, you'll get them electronically if you'll share your email address. That was the whole point of, of asking to be on the agenda. They say this is the formal distribution of this material, and you can comment on it on the next one.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can I request that all copies of this get sent to the board, the zoning board members for review?
Sure.
Thank you.
We're going to take a five-minute recess, and when we come back, I'm going to recuse myself of the next application. So, five-minute recess.
Hey Frank, can you come here for a minute?
Everybody's ready? Okay, we will be hearing the continuation of eleven Franklin Avenue, block twenty-three oh one, lot one, preliminary and final site plan and major subdivision plan. I'd like to know if everyone read the transcripts. We're all up to date so we can vote. Yes?
Well, let's find out. Was everyone here last time?
No, yeah.
All right, so then we're going to have to let you certify on the record.
I'm certifying on the record that all of Ms. Shore have read the...
You're certified, all right.
Anyone else?
I know they don't have to talk. I know that, thank you.
Okay, so proceed.
Thank you. Lisa Johnbasta with Love from Key, the Champagneian, and Jen Kamaki on behalf of the applicant, eleven Franklin Redevelopment LLC. We're here tonight for a continuation of a hearing that began in September in connection with eleven Franklin Avenue, the former Hoffman La Roche site. At the time of the hearing, our professionals presented their testimony. All of the hearing was closed out but for traffic. The board wanted to engage their own traffic expert to take a look at our consultant's finding and issue of report. That has now been done, and we are here to listen to the findings of the report and to address it sufficiently.
And we agree that the only issue we're addressing this evening is traffic?
Correct.
Mr. Hertz, would you be sworn, please?
Can you swear without the truth, to help you put the truth to help you lie?
I do. Okay. Uh, if, I'm sure you all remember, but I couldn't make the last meeting, kind of check in my door down in Florida after those hurricanes, but she ultimately got deployed before the recalls on the hospital building out. And anyway, after that meeting, I, I called Frank to see what happened at, at the meeting. And when he explained to me what was going on, I talked to the applicant's cons, uh, engineer and told him that we would like to see a, the board really needs to see a traffic report for a full buildout of that, of that site because of their, and that, that would, I felt, would justify the, the Excel diesel lanes that the board liked to look before. So I, I, I asked John Jar, who wrote this report, he's Brightview Engineering, he's the, I used to work with him at Mazer. He, he left there, he started his own company, but he's, just so you know his qualifications, he's a P.E. and he's also the traffic engineer for a number of planning zoning boards in the state of New Jersey. So he had a conflict tonight so he couldn't make it, so that's why I'm giving this spiel. So basically, if you, if you go through his report, John doesn't have a problem with the board approving the, the site plan for the two uses that they proposed, self-storage and I think it was a C E S or...
Pharmacy.
Pharmacy, okay. What, what he did in his report, you'll see highlighted comments, is that if, if this applicant comes in for another use, a site plan for another use in that property, there's a number of recommendations that he's going to want to see from the applicant's traffic engineer so that he can properly review that for whatever next uses that you, that they come into. Okay? Now, the, we spoke to the applicant's engineer and if you, and I think they'll do, they'll testify or, or, you know, testify to it that they, they, they agreed to, to provide a ten-foot road widening easement on Mill Street and Franklin Avenue for, if the county or the town wants to widen those roads, we'll have that ability to do that, and it will not affect their project. From what, also from what I understand is that they are going to move some signs around so that if that road widening takes effect, there will be no seat variances associated with any signs or buildings on that site.
And who's going to pay to widen the roads? Us?
No. If we required, it would be the applicant's obligation.
All right, so we, we require them to widen...
You've got to remember Franklin Avenue is a county road, so...
Well, they got G. Tommaso, he can get that done.
I'm sure he can do it.
You know, so, you don't want to hear this, you know?
But...
Tommaso's, I'm not voting for this unless these roads are widened. So, we can keep going.
Okay. And, uh, again, it's, we can recommend it, but it's, the county's approved, you know, based, you know, the county's going to approve the road widening. The other recommendation in the report is that any meetings that the applicant has with the county's traffic engineer or the county, that we'd like to be present at that so that we can reinforce the town's position at the same time they're, you know, giving the county their position. So hopefully, I think that's kind of really summarizes what's going on here and...
Mr. Hertz, as our expert, do you believe that these recommendations constitute a planning?
Recommendations of the bar traffic engineer?
Yes.
Yes.
And would you recommend these then to the board?
Yes, I would.
And you would ask that if the board goes forward with this application, that the conditions that you outlined be made part of the resolution?
Yes. Again, with the caveat that...
The county ultimately has restrictions.
And with the caveat that any future development on the site, they follow the recommendations of this traffic engineer.
Would you recommend that Mill Street be done, that widening be born in?
I, I think, and I think the, I don't want to speak, I, I don't think, at this point, you need the road widening. I think, uh, your next future development, yes, you will. And you'll have that ability to do that.
Thousand cars.
No, you'll have that ability to, right now, what their traffic expert can testify to, but the, the trip generation for the two sites that are, that you're to approve tonight are not as great as a full buildout of that site. And you'll have the ability to, to force them to do the road widens because you'll have an easement to do that.
Mr. Hertz, for the record, would you have your colleagues record entered as a board exhibit with tonight's date, please?
It's from Brightview Engineering, signed by John Jar, who's a P.E. and a traffic, you know, traffic engineer, and it's dated, "Traffic Impact Study Review Proposed Commercial Center Eleven Franklin Avenue, Block Twenty-three Oh One, Lot One, Belleville, dated October tenth, two thousand seventeen."
Would you mind giving that copy to our recorder at the board, please?
I think Lois has a copy. I have a copy.
Thank you. Madam Chair, first?
I have a quick question. Dynamic traffic report, where did that come from? Can anybody answer that one?
Ken, can I have the date of that report?
September eighteen, twenty seventeen.
Yeah, that was committed on, our office committed on behalf of the applicant to the board for a review, as well as his professional. I just, just tell you that after that, your board professional asked for some supplemental information regarding the full buildout analysis, which we provided to him after his request. But again, that's related to full buildout, and that was presented to the board today.
And Council, why don't we have this more day to your exhibit then?
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
What did he say about the traffic light they want to put up?
About the traffic light?
Or did nobody tell him?
No, no, I think the traffic light's something that they're, if you look at the traffic reports, they're showing a traffic light at, at one of the...
Yeah, the end of the old Hoffman La Roche front.
Yes.
Yeah, that's what they want. What do you say about the traffic light going there?
I don't think he had a problem with the traffic light. I think it's, and I, I think one of the uses that they're proposing, they, they want the traffic light there.
Yeah, so you have a traffic light on Franklin and, you have a traffic light there, and you have a traffic light in front of Claremont Hospital.
Correct.
And you have a traffic light when you go underneath the bridge, just where the railroad is.
Correct.
I know I'm correct. I'm just saying it's a bad idea to have a traffic light there.
Well, then, we're going to, for people to try to make left turns out of the site's going to be a problem.
Well, upside, no left turn.
The other things that, that they could probably testify to is I think the county's required, going to require them to lower Franklin Avenue so that there's better sight distance out of their, one of their driveways. If you, if you know Franklin Avenue has a hill to it, so they're going to have to lower that crest so that coming out of the soda weed driveway, you'd be able to see traffic coming south, I guess, coming south of Franklin Avenue.
Yeah, but the problem I have for years, thousands of people worked at Jurgensen's. And, and they came out of there at the end of the day, going in there in the morning, and there was no need of a traffic light then. And you're not telling me there's, there's, you know, less people now than there was with Jurgensen's was there.
I don't know, I don't know how much parking they had for Jurgensen's. There's a, I forget how many spots there were.
That was all behind on the right side.
Yeah, no, no, I, I know where it's at. It was way in the back there. Well...
Mr. Hertz, could I...
I think, I think the traffic light is...
He's trying to figure out how to answer me. You want to answer the question?
I do want to answer the question. Thank you very much.
No, I think the traffic light is, is something that the county's going to look at also.
Oh, we know, we, we know the county's going to look at. Go ahead, Arlene.
Thank you, Ken.
Tell us by the hours.
Tom, question. We received this sheet of paper with green...
Yeah, I told Lois, Mr. Frank Antoni brought that up at a meeting on Tuesday.
I didn't give you that.
Oh, I'm sorry. Do you know where it came from?
I meant copies, and he was talking about taking that property where the pink is, widen Franklin Avenue and widen Mill Street, so...
And the applicants, uh, as far as I'm, I know that they're willing to give the, those easements so that you can widen the streets if that's what's required.
But you're saying the county, it depends, the county on Franklin Avenue. So if we say that they have to widen both sides and they go down...
Then they bring, you'll bring, we'll bring your recommendation to the county when they have a meeting with the county.
Well, then I, I don't want to vote on it until we get an answer that the street widening would be allowed.
Okay.
Do we need the county approval to widen that, that area?
Not Mill Street.
No, where the crest, because I think getting rid of that part of the railroad, where the curve is on Mill Street, where you know it... The pillar. And I see that we could, we could cut into that area to the right slightly and widen that just a little bit so, because you don't have any, you don't have any movement for cars to get to the right if they want to make a right turn. It just is a single backup if that was...
At, at the traffic light.
At Mill, at on Mill, not on Franklin, but on Mill.
Right, yeah.
That one section of Mill.
If that's the board's recommendation, that they're give, they're gonna give you the land to do that, to make, to allow, I guess, the stack of a right and left turn lane and a left turn lane.
Because that would, that would just help with the stacking up, because on on that part of Mill Street, there's no place to go. And sometimes it does literally back up for, runs back to her.
Harrison.
Yes, it can back up, it can back up sometimes to Harrison. But I think, I understand the county and the county issues, but I think that if we widen Mill Street, we have the flexibility, especially on one side, for that should be considered because it's a problem. I I tend to come home that way from work and Mill Street backs up right now, but I don't have an issue with the the functions of what's proposed right now, the storage unit, but that's not a.
Storage is not a big traffic generator.
No, the the pads and the uses of the pads are not, not a, not a concern. It just that I just have that one concern about Mill. As far as I know, this is only traffic related, I'm sorry, I'm progressing and I apologize to the board. Yes, my only concern would be Mill Street is is single lane, period.
If I'm not mistaken, that they they were gonna revise some of the grading so that there would be better site distance up and down Mill Street. I don't know if that, I don't think that that hasn't been done yet, but I haven't, but that would be a compliance issue if you improve the site.
That that would, that would help the situation because visibility with that curve without a streak, I think farther up, there's a dead end, big streak to the left, that's, yeah, if you're coming up, if you're coming up through Branch Brook Park and going directly heading, continuing on Mill.
Right.
There's only, there's only a dead end streak right now, so that and it's farther up, so it doesn't affect the visibility where the proposed entrance exit would be. A park coming around a curve would have visibility, have visibility issue right now.
Well, I mean, one of our discussions, me and Frank met with them over a month ago, and our discussion was to improve the site distance up and down Mill Street and then we're gonna regrade some of the areas.
All right, then my question is simply redundant based on what you already know.
Yes.
Thank you, Ken. I have a quick question. And it might just be that, I need a recollection. I believe there was one driveway. Now it appears to look like there's two coming out on Franklin Avenue. Am I wrong or?
I don't remember too.
The plans have not changed since the last time that you.
So there is two.
Right.
The ones are right there.
The 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 normally one is only a right turnout and the other one is where the proposed traffic light met, so left and right out.
I understand Kevin's concern from a planning point because there's a lot of traffic. And I don't wanna be the one to hold up development, especially on that property, but why isn't the county, why aren't we wired and putting a car before the horse when we're gonna approve the plan? We're gonna create a traffic problem and then we're gonna go to the county.
Not at this point, you are.
No, we're gonna go back to the, say, do it, and it's too late.
At some point, and then it's too late, yeah. And then it's, well, you're pretty different.
Right.
And now that we're, what are we gonna do here?
I I think we should have something done with Mill Street grants with that, and then, I mean, we have no jurisdiction over the county.
Why isn't the county involved in the planning stage?
They should have been, but we didn't have any.
They've met with the county, they can recap what their meetings, their discussions with the county engineer.
Right, I, when the board's done discussing the report that was issued, if you wouldn't mind, I would like our professional to get up to address those points one by one and he can reiterate the conversation that they had with the county. And I just remind the board that any approval that's granted by this board would be conditioned upon county approval. So we won't be able to do the development unless there is county approval.
Any other questions for Kevin?
What's real, Mr. Short? Yes, please. Justin Taylor, to Dynamic Traffic.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and not to let the truth out?
I do.
Thank you.
Let me maybe just address one point before we get into the letter to Madam Chair, no, I'm sorry, to Ms. Short. We have taken a look at the site distance through there. The abutment is actually being.
What exhibit are you referring to?
I'm referring to the A2, did the amended overall site plan rendering.
Thank you.
And around the curve on Mill Street, the abutment is actually being removed. And this area will be graded in order to give safe sight lines for the driveway to be able to see vehicles traveling up and down Mill. So what was a concern of ours as well, to make sure visibility was good for people exiting that driveway. To get back to the letter that was produced and reviewed by the board's traffic consultant, I had a chance to go through it, and as your engineer stated, we are really in in agreement with every comment that he has in that letter. There was a couple of things in there that he asked for additional testimony, which I'll run through now, but there's a lot of suggestions that he had for the full build-out of the site. You know, you recognize that the two uses that are being proposed at this time really are low-traffic generators. We're talking about a car during busiest hour of the site, a car every couple of minutes along Mill Street.
You're right on that point, but then when you put the gas station there, or you put an eatery there, and you put something else there, you put the doctor's office there, then then the scope of the traffic changes.
And that's correct, and that was his concern, and that's brought up in this letter. And it was also brought up, I believe, by Mr. Conkey the last time, that if you were to approve something without any type of easement or any type of guarantee, that there would be a room for us to widen in the future if it was needed. You know, then you've kind of zoned yourself out of that. And so that's why we are proposing that 10-foot dedication of roadway easement along both frontages. What we find is during this phase one, the widening isn't needed. It's not there. The traffic impact, the car every two minutes during the busy hour, doesn't really justify the need for the the development there.
That's not, you know, I have to interrupt because this report really, really irked me when I read it.
Okay.
Number one, you're using from 2015 statistics. They're not current.
Well, we utilized traffic counts that were conducted along the roadway, that's correct.
On 2015?
They weren't from 2015. Yes, that's correct.
You can no longer move out of that area. The traffic is horrendous.
I mean, I I think the traffic conditions are similar to what they are today and the growth factor that was applied for hours.
Yes, the timelines of peak hours is not justified in this report. You go up to eight forty-five, that's not peak.
We kind of between.
You can go there till nine thirty and you can't get out of Mill Street.
I mean, I understand that, but what that was at, that, once we move out of that seven to nine peak hour that we studied, you start to see the decrease in the traffic generated by the the actual site. And so what we really want is the worst-case scenario, the peak generation of the site and the peak roadway combined to give that worst-case analysis, which is.
But your peak hours are not what is fact at today's standards.
That's, I I have.
You're going from seven to eight forty-five, that's not peak time there.
I I got it.
I know this because I live there. You can't get out after nine thirty. When you come home at night, your peak hours, it's through the park all the way down to Union Avenue. That's a peak hour until almost six thirty. That's not either.
And and we counted, I believe, from four thirty to six thirty to accommodate that. But we have also put automatic traffic reporters down, right? So the tubes on the grid that we recount for a week. And what we actually find, the peak hour along Franklin Avenue is eight AM to nine AM, which is what our traffic counts, our manual turning counts.
I'm talking Mill Street. Talking Mill Street. You have it down here, peak time, seven to eight forty-five in the morning. At night, four thirty to six.
Correct.
At six thirty, it's horrendous.
The traffic counts.
The traffic is from Mill Street to Union Avenue at times.
It works.
Monday through Friday, it's horrendous.
The traffic counts were conducted from seven AM to nine AM, and we found that the one peak hour.
Doesn't say that in your report.
Um, actually on page two, under existing conditions, says manual turning movement counts were conducted on Tuesday, November ten, two thousand fifteen, between seven AM and nine AM.
Two thousand fifteen, we're back to two thousand fifteen.
And between four thirty PM and six thirty PM.
It's antiquated statistics, this board's.
Well, I mean, as I said, I believe that the conditions may have increased. We also, to accommodate for that, looked at New Jersey Transportation for a background birthday to accommodate other development coming online, other traffic, and and we increased the traffic by that two percent per year, which is what the NJDOT would recommend, to bring that base volume up to two thousand seventeen. We then took that as existing and added two more years of growth to the full build-out of this development, which we anticipated would be two thousand nineteen. So we actually have four years of background growth at two percent per year to take that into account, the fact that it started in two thousand fifteen.
So you know, we're looking at over, over a thousand, maybe fifteen hundred according to that?
No, not at all. What we found was under about.
A thousand now.
Well, it's not, it's about eight hundred and fifty now, under an existing condition.
But that's what your statistics are saying.
Well, it is, if you would look at figure, figure one in the back of the study.
I have a grand total of one thousand two hundred cars on Mill Street. And your other study says eight hundred and one.
I'm not sure whether some, what are you referring to, which figure?
I was just happy that this was your report and not ours, because I'm very happy that our engineer did what you did. And I'm happy with those statistics and that's, and I would encourage the board to think about it and go with ours.
Well.
But I I you don't have to explain anything more.
Can we then just walk through your professional's letter?
Sure.
Okay. So in comment one, he asked, as you say, about traffic counts and why we conducted them during the, when we did. He says that typically, or he actually recommends only counting from four to six. We counted from four to three thirty to six thirty in the evening because we did find that the peak was a little bit later than industry standards would set it. So we did conduct our counts from four thirty to six thirty, not four to six, as as would typically be done for traffic impact studies. Comments two through four, he's asked for additional information for the full build-out condition when that development is considered. He talks about a three-year build-out when that comes online. He also recommends that we look at possible improvements at the intersection of Mill and Franklin for this full back, full build-out condition, and we completely agree with that. We would comply with that. When the site would come back and we really have a firm idea of what the rest of the phases would be, absolutely will be resubmitting another traffic study, which will address that and address his comments. Number four, he asks for some additional information for that full build-out for the trip generation, and we would be able to provide that at that time. In number five, he asked for some testimony about pedestrian access to the site. And what we are proposing, based on his comment, is to actually connect the sidewalks. There's currently sidewalks along both Mill Street and Franklin Avenue. And we would connect, while it's not shown as planned, we would propose to connect the sidewalk network along this internal roadway to provide pedestrian connectivity through both. There is a connection currently proposed to pharmacy, and then we would also run it between the pharmacy and up to self-storage, so that there is internal connection, you don't have pedestrians walking on the roadway. And it's something I I agree with as a traffic engineer, that we should have that internal connectivity between the uses for the pedestrians. So it's something we would do. Comments six through eight refer to additional information for the full build-out condition, and we would apply to that as we would move forward. The next section of his report, site access and circulation, in comments one through six, we we will fully comply with what he's requiring and requesting. Some of it, some site distance analysis, which we talked about, and that we will provide as a condition of approval, and also some that your your engineer recommended, that the township be invited to any meetings with the county, which we are completely on board with moving forward. Number seven asks for some clarification on the emergency vehicle fire truck that we utilized. We utilized in our analysis a forty-seven-foot truck. We have to firm with the township that the largest vehicle they actually use is forty-one feet, and so the the one, the templates that we provided are actually provided conservative analysis. Items eight and nine deal with parking and loading, that was actually testified to at the last meeting, and the operational stuff that was that was provided for the proposed uses. So that actually already has been provided. Items ten through twelve, we agree to comply with. And finally, in the general, there are three comments. We will comply with all three of those with a bit of a clarification in the the fact that we are proposing that 10-foot easement along both roadways for any future widening that might be necessary with a further build-out of this project.
Just to clarify, the Mill Street side is in the future?
That's correct. So I I would just like to read comment three under general, it said, "We believe that the current application, two uses, provides adequate parking and minimal traffic impacts. Is is our understanding the plan is being revised to accommodate future acceleration and deceleration levels along both frontages in the future, if needed, in the future." And so, I mean, reading that, I believe it's his recommendation, and that's that we're taking and providing that area to accommodate it in the future if it's needed, but under this phase one, the traffic really just doesn't justify the need for that type of, that type of improvement.
So, just to clarify, I mean, the application that's presented for the board tonight only relates to the the two pads, one's a self-storage facility and one's a pharmacy with drive-through. Based on our traffic engineers' testimony, there are low-traffic generating uses, and I believe that your traffic expert has agreed with that conclusion. I think where the board is getting hung up is in the future. And that application is not before the board this evening, but what we're doing to accommodate the questions that were raised and issues addressed by the board last time is, well, what if you build it out and then you can't do anything about it in the future? So what your traffic engineer has suggested, which we're agreeing to, is to provide a 10-foot wide easement so that in the future, when we come back with full build-out analysis, when we know what the exact uses are, when we have a traffic report related to those uses, and it is determined by your professionals, engineer, traffic expert, et cetera, we would be able to have room to provide for those improvements when the traffic is, and the improvements are actually necessitated.
And counsel, so you will put the the proposed easements on what would be your final plans?
Yeah, yeah, we would do that.
Does it change any setbacks?
It does not, no.
So we would, we would not create any more deviations or or barriers issues, we would move back the signage 10 feet so that it's in full compliance with the code.
That was the one session.
And we would do that now, so that there's no issue in the future.
Mr. Hertz, would you like to see that, that plan?
Well, I mean, the board decided off on it. They'll come in and they'll submit plans for.
You wanna make that as a condition if the board were to move forward on it, because we don't have that in front of us, the easement or.
Any arrangements that the board makes would have to be on their plans, revised set of plans for a compliance review before the building department would issue any building permits.
And you'll accept it as a condition then?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Walsh.
To go back to the, your comment on pedestrian access and circulation, you said you were going to put a walkway around the the access road that's that's in there?
That's correct.
And now go all the way to Mill Street?
That's correct. We would connect the two sidewalks from Franklin to Mill through the site, and it's anticipated as this, the other pieces of this start to come online, we want a fully walkable development, whether there's office or there's the the a gas station or there's other uses in here. We wanna be able to encourage them to walk safely through the neighborhood.
Or if you take the the sidewalk all the way to Mill Street, are you then causing a problem by encouraging people in the apartment complex on the other side to walk across Mill Street?
To walk, to cross Mill Street?
Yeah.
I don't think you're necessarily encouraging them to cut through here, because other than getting to this development, there's no reason for them to cut through, and in order to do that, you have the crosswalks down here at the intersection of Mill and Franklin. Because I I don't foresee a fair amount of customers for the self-storage necessarily walking from those apartments. I could see the pharmacy absolutely situated in the corner, and it's much, much more conducive for them to walk to the corner and then utilize the sidewalk network provided in front of the pharmacy.
Well, certainly, they're gonna find it easier to go directly across than down to the corner and then cross and then come back up from this corner.
I mean, the sidewalk along Mill Street is there today. Even if we weren't to put the sidewalk network through there, they'd still be utilizing the sidewalk to access the site that's that we're proposing. So I think providing it.
Right, but with the sidewalk there, there's no reason for anybody to cross Mill Street to get to the other side.
I'm not, I'm not following that. They would need to access this site, given that the elevation changes, you would need to use the sidewalk proposed at the southeast corner of the proposed pharmacy. This actually sits up above because of the grade that goes through here. So this is the path of least resistance for people to access this point. And and typically, the pedestrians would follow that path of path of least resistance. So the proposal of the sidewalk through the network here, I don't think does anything to encourage or discourage that that condition.
What apartments are you talking about, mom?
Seniors.
Oh, seniors.
Senior building, which is located.
Are fifty-five and old.
Yep.
The seniors have access through their site to, to, if I remember correctly, through senior. senior citizen center to get to the sidewalk on Franklin Avenue and then make a course out of life.
Because there's no sidewalk in front of the senior building.
No, no, but there's.
Fifty-five building.
No, but there's a set of steps. If you go over there, you see there's a set of steps that lead to the, that lead to the Franklin Avenue sidewalk from, from the building.
It's got a fence up.
They, they put a fence up because there's a retaining wall there. But if I remember correctly, there's a set of steps that could lead from their site to the Franklin Avenue sidewalk. So if anything, I would think they would walk that way instead of going down that bridge and down that ramp, you know, the way that bridge is. So there's, from the, from the senior citizen housing, they have access to the Franklin Avenue sidewalk at the north side of the senior citizen center, and they could, then they could cross at the traffic light on Franklin and Mill.
Just a way people get.
No, I understand. I don't think they would walk across that bridge, their bridge anyway, to be honest with you. Because there's no sidewalk at all until you get up towards the, like, the disabled vets on the Mill Street side.
I've seen seniors walking in the street there. Instead of going the way you say, down the stairs.
Right.
And walking over to the pharmacy. I have seen a lady pulling her grocery bag or whatever the hell it was, walking on Mill Street, heading towards a bridge to go into the building. I don't know how that was a good way.
I would say no one's going to do that, but I mean.
Uh-huh. How do you tell?
They do have, they do have access to the Franklin Avenue sidewalk.
People get run over every day illegally crossing.
And Chris Short? Just for the pharmacy, because when one by the car wants to get into the pharmacy from Franklin Avenue, how would you get in?
So if you were traveling southbound along Franklin Avenue, you would utilize the right-turn-in, right-turn-out driveway here located to the south end of the pharmacy building. If you're traveling northbound, you would actually most likely utilize the traffic light and come in through here and access the site in that direction. Or you would come up to Franklin Avenue, make a left, and secure yourself. But there's no left turn proposed at this center driveway. That's right turn-in, right turn-out.
Okay, thank you, Ben. I missed that. That's what my concern was because of that intersection.
I thought you said the last meeting, the driveway on top behind the storage building is a one-way out.
This driveway?
Yes.
On Mill is, is, no, is a full movement driveway.
Well, that was the one you said last meeting. You said it was a exit-only driveway.
I don't believe that I did. And if I did, I apologize, I spoke in error. But we've always proposed this as a full movement driveway, and all our analysis is showing that as a full movement driveway.
You have people going up Mill Street now making lefts into there, and people making out.
Correct.
And you wouldn't consider putting in Mill Street's, what's proposed in three years?
I mean, what we're talking about from a, from a volume standpoint is during that busiest hour, eight or nine cars in an hour. A car would be six or seven minutes.
Well, we like to do prevent.
I, I understand that.
I think that's, that's the thing. There's a problem that exists now, and I know I'd feel better thinking that it was done now, so we would prevent in the future. But that's only my.
So, so we do have, we will reserve the easement area. And, you know, this is all right now based on hypotheticals. So once there's a, a full buildout of these two pad sites, if your consultants feel that it's necessary, can, can we think about maybe at that point in time doing the, the lane if it's necessary at that point in time? There will be that easement reserved for you. But I think that once this is built, you're going to see that there's, it's going to be very low traffic volume generation.
It's horrendous now. I can't see it not getting any better, whether it's one more car, it's a problem on Mill Street. It, it backs up, and your study, with all due respect, I don't agree with that because it's two years old. The times are not really a peak hour, and that, that's, that's me. If you don't want to do it in the old, you're right, that, that's all right.
So what exactly are you looking for, Pat? You're just looking for a, your right turn?
We'd like to see Mill Street done.
The whole, the whole length of it? Or just the?
What's being proposed?
Or, or just to have a right turn lane at the intersection?
What's being proposed on, on, on that extra lane?
An extra, at the intersection.
The right turn, the right turn lane on your. You know, fixing that, that's our, most of everybody's concern between last meeting and this meeting is Mill Street. And unless you actually sit in that traffic and you see what kind of traffic is up there.
It's unfortunate that your, your traffic consultant was not here this evening, and I think, I would, I would hope that your, your engineer who spoke with him would agree that the conclusion was, based on what's proposed today, it's not warranted, which is why we're reserving it. And I think your traffic engineer concurs with our traffic engineer on that point. This is why we would re-reserve it for future buildout if it's not warranted.
I just want to ask a question on the easement. Is the easement the whole stretch of Mill Street for the whole property line? I said last meeting, and I'll say this meeting, I'll trust the traffic reports. I will have to trust your testimony, the testimony of our expert. In the future, if there's, if, if these two pads create that kind of havoc, and it is a bad intersection, then we wouldn't approve any other development. And obviously, they want to develop the rest of the traffic. And it, it's going to take some, some work to get the county to agree, to approve. Whatever you put, whatever you put at this site.
It's halfway.
Yeah, but whatever you put at this site, that right-hand turn lane is not going to solve all the problems in that area. It's just not. It'll help, and I would love to see it. But if they could, both our experts more or less agree that this first phase of development isn't going to impact that much, well, let's find out, you know? Because they need to come back and find the board for, for approvals on future development. At that point, you know, can we twist the arm of the county? Maybe we can't. It's all our dreams and wishes, but it really doesn't add up too much if the county's not going to go along with it.
But we could do something about Mill, that's my point. We could do something about Mill now.
You still have to get the town to approve. You still have to get the council to approve.
Our engineer has said that it's necessary.
No, no, it's your, it's your approval.
At whose cost?
The developer's. The developer's.
Yeah, I, I'll just keep reiterating that I believe your consultant and ours concur at this point in time, based on what is proposed for development today, which is before the board today, it's not warranted based on the self-storage and the pharmacy. We'll reserve it for the future. When we do come back, and we will come back to this board for future development and buildout, and at that point in time, you will have that easement reserved if you feel that it's warranted. And I'm sure there will be future discussions with the, with the county related to impact on Franklin Avenue at that point in time as well.
Wouldn't it make sense from your, from your perspective to just do the improvement now and not go from curb to building to curb, develop it, and come back in and tear it all out and put the roadway in?
If I, if I could have our professional sworn our, our witness related to the owner's rap, please, which is a hint, do you swear to tell the truth, the truth, and not to tell the truth to Harvey that? Please, name your name.
Christopher Richter, R.I.C.H.T.E.R. I was previously sworn. So having been involved in this situation before, I, we would love if, if there was actually an understanding of what that approval would be. We can't speculate how much the road permits would be until we know what the land uses are and what they resolve the traffic system. So if we end up building a hotel and some retail, and the rest of the site is dormant for ten years because there isn't ten interest, we're, we're spending money that doesn't provide any return for us. These two projects can't afford to widen out this intersection and, and claw off what may be need if there's two or three hundred thousand square feet additional floor around this project. But we don't know what that is. We don't know when that's going to occur. We don't know what else is going to happen to the surrounding road network. And, you know, when we talk about widening, you know, it's not just like, oh, just widen. There's an engineering plan that has to have tapers and, and widths and, and curve rate AI and, and capacity analysis, and we're not even close to that. We have no idea what's happening with this project. So I think it's unfair to say just widen. First of all, it's clear that there is no justification of these two land uses to widen. But we are here saying we're fully committed to doing the right thing. We're going to dedicate a lot of land, reserve it for future road widening purposes, but right now, there is no need for it. We understand your concerns, and by giving the ability for us to step in and build out the infrastructure and creating development that is pushed back and designed to accommodate the road widening, I think we're being responsible developers until the end of it.
I agree.
Sir, to help the board, how much land are you reserving? Because right now, the board has no idea how wide, how long the easement is going to take.
If you, Justice, if you just give me the quantities on Mill and Franklin, please?
We have six hundred and sixty-four point eight-eight feet.
Can you just give me almost, six hundred and?
Sixty-four point eight-eight along Franklin.
Okay.
And then on Mill, we actually have a couple because the curb, it's four hundred and forty-five point two-four plus one thirteen point one-eight plus one sixteen point nine-six.
All right, so those are substantial easements in terms of length. What about the width?
It will be ten feet along both roadways, which would be sufficient to put that extra lane and sidewalk and all the roadway.
I just, also.
Let's just hold that second. Any questions about the length and the width of the easement? Is the board satisfied with those proposed dimensions? Is that a yes to silence?
Yes.
I have no comments, though. I know what I'm going to do when it comes to two of votes.
I just wanted to make comment. Mill Street, at, at the point where you're talking about widening the road, there's a depressed area in there that would require, you know, quite a bit of construction. So to the developer's point, if both of our experts are telling us that the traffic, the extra traffic isn't going to be that hurtful to the situation, and then if they want to proceed forward with something that, that even our expert feels would be, then at that point, they'd have to execute that plan, or else we wouldn't approve the next project. But widening the road isn't like widening a parking lot. There's infrastructure, there's traffic lights, there's a lot. It's expensive, I'm sure. So I wouldn't want to hold up the project just for that. One other thing, is it, the proposed light at the main entrance, is that just proposed now? The county hasn't?
No, no, thank you for bringing it up. I just want to clarify for the record the proposal. When the plans were originally filed, as you know, there was a, a gas community store on the plate. That's a relatively high-trip genre. That's not on it. We cannot get the signal warrants and the ability to construct that traffic light with just these two units. You need more traffic. So just to clarify for the record, we are not seeking approval for that traffic signal under this phase one application. It is going to, because we can't build it, we will not get permits to do it. So that is going to be deferred to the point in time when we generate enough traffic in this project to meet that signal.
We can't expect this developer to ease the traffic problems that exist there. We can't.
And I think.
So what are you saying? You're not going to put a gas station in?
Right.
Not, not here, not right now.
Oh, not right now?
No, it's not part of our application, which is true.
I knew you were true, but you're saying you're not going to put a gas station there in the future?
No, I'm not saying that.
Okay, thank you.
I'm saying it's not part of the application.
I know, it's not part, I know it's not part of this application. All the other things you're talking about, the medical center, the hotel, the trips to Vegas, that's not part of the, the application right now. But it's what happens in the future that's going to clog this area up even worse.
And we are making, we, there's nothing else we can do except give land in anticipation of us regenerating that traffic. It is our responsibility to mitigate that traffic, and we build those approvals. That's the way the road works. We're not saying we're not doing that. We're saying that is not the right time. Your, your, your traffic consultant is very concise. It is not warranted at this point in time. We are no way, you know, saying anything, but we will do the right things in the future when we know what the traffic will be. And I think your, your counsel can guide you on the issue of the fact that your traffic is a pre-existing problem, right? We're permitted uses in the zone.
We don't want to make it worse.
No, we're permitted uses in the zone, and we've got plans. If you have a pre-existing problem, I think you can, there's, I'm certainly not going to get into the specifics under pre-existing conditions on traffic. But because you have an existing problem, I don't think it's fair that on these two land uses, you put that burden to resolve it on our back.
All right, well, you don't want it on your back, you can put it on your back.
Mr. Pibiazi, do we have recourse with future development if it exceeds, you know, the traffic recommendations to, to deny an application?
This board will have jurisdiction for any future development, and the applicant has already stated on the record that the applicant agrees with that. If you're going to come back here for any future development, at that time, we will look at the dynamics of traffic and, and make a determination at that time. Mr. Hertz, can you give the board an opinion based upon your colleague's report as to what impact these two uses would have? Just these two uses on existing traffic?
Based on the parking required and the trip generation, they would, they'll have a negligible effect. I think the parking is around fifty for both uses, and the self-storage is, even though it might require twenty spaces or whatever the number was, that, that those uses are.
Does the board have any questions regarding this later?
Self-storage is really a busy, really self, you know, busy.
I, I tend to be a market, a market person. If the traffic gets that horrendous, nobody's going to a convenience store in that corner when there's five other ones in town. And that pharmacy will suffer, and that storage facility will suffer because the roadways can't handle it. I, I, I don't, I think it's, we're beating a dead horse. We have control over future development. If we want to move the project forward, I'd make a motion to move the project forward and, you know.
Maybe just eliminate some apprehension on the board. What is your schedule for, do you plan on building these two buildings immediately and then come back and, I mean, like Mr. Conti said, I hate to see any improvements made, and then all of a sudden you're ripping them out for another use or?
No, no, we're committed to the, well, the internal little road, Brian. We're committed to constructing the self-storage as quickly as possible. We do not have a signed deal with a drugstore. So right now, we would immediately proceed to the infrastructure, which is a very expensive package, bring all utilities into the project for any or future uses that may or may not come in. It's, you know, water, sewer, dry utilities, your gas, electric, you know, conduit for telephone service for the entire little road connecting Franklin to Mill, and then building the self-storage pad, as well as all the, the master planned drainage system. So you've got a potential basin that's designed behind the self-storage that's, that serves to find the additional curries in the future. And then the lower basin, all the retaining walls, you've got three-tiered walls, there's, you know, million dollars of retaining, so there's just special amount of infrastructure that we do go now in anticipation of, you know, creating a ground for the rest of the blocks.
So what improvements are being, are you, are you, just, so you're on the record, improvements are you proposing at the intersection of Mill and Franklin? As a new site? As there, the cost of that would be minimal, you're going to absorb that mostly upfront, and then they have to widen it ten feet. It's a, it's a minimal cost to you. Is that what you're saying, why you're grading?
I think what we're doing under the basin infrastructure is we're not grading any conferences to widen the road.
I understand that, but you're, you're setting it up for a walk, you're setting it up in case there is going to be a widening, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, and so, so what I'm saying is that the cost to widen it, yeah, you can have the Biden curb and that, but it's already graded and there's no moving of whatever improvements you made on site.
Correct.
Okay.
And that means, how is the sidewalk figured in? Is it figured in or?
Well, no, I mean, the sidewalk we stay in, once it's widened, we have to remove the existing sidewalk, install new curving and new sidewalk behind and new.
So the easement, would, would, would it have to be bigger than ten feet to accommodate the sidewalk? Where are we coming from the, the curb now?
You have additional right-of-way that exists right now. So your right-of-way line is, is, is ten plus feet behind these, this curb line. So there's plenty of room there to accommodate additional lane. And, you know, it's, I think we're doing the right thing from a planning perspective.
Is, is the lowering of Franklin Avenue part of your phase one, too?
No, I don't believe so. That would be part of the traffic signal.
That's, that requirement is based on stopping site distance requirement for the signal and the ability to see those vehicles stopping at that light. So that requirement under, under the, just the non-signalized intersection. So that requirement under the, just the non-signalized intersection. Right now, I'm saying it's not, but we don't have our county approval yet, so there's still a chance that the county says fix that issue. That would be covered under the condition of any approval if the board seeks to do so under the county approval.
What's the grade difference on the right turn only drive in front of pharmacy from the curve to the pharmacy area?
Can you once, sir? Ron, can you just ask that question again?
The right turn only off of Franklin heading south at one driveway. What's the grade difference between curb and, say, parking area or slab elevation?
So right now, the right and right-out driveway is approximately elevation ninety-four where it meets Franklin. And a parking lot, as you go in the north, is at ninety-seven, and as you go towards the internal road, it gets up to about ninety-nine. And just as a point of reference, the intersection of Mill and Franklin is at elevation of up to eighty. So that driveway is fourteen feet above the pharmacy.
Is there any other question?
Tom, do you have any?
No, no.
All right, I'm gonna open up to the public. Mr. D'Arashian?
So let me just say this, if we're only going to ask questions now, we're not gonna swear in witnesses.
Okay.
If we get into comments, then we're gonna swear you in.
Okay. The question is this, on this corner where you're giving easement around the corner, how is that gonna affect the parking for the pharmacy?
It won't impact the parking for the pharmacy.
You have the parking going almost directly to the woman.
We have the parking in this area in the north east corner of property.
Right.
There's a property line that runs along there, we would be extending that ten feet and it actually does not impact the parking muscle ever.
Nothing at all.
Nope.
Okay, who's asking? Thank you.
Mr. Grant, Tom?
Yes, I have two questions. Sorry, this is your dynamic traffic study.
That's correct.
It states it was taken on November tenth, twenty fifteen, but then you added the two percent, the New Jersey DOT annual background growth rate.
That's correct.
Two percent. That two percent, I have engineers, architects, nieces and nephews in the family, so they contacted, they got me to chart. That two percent is not calculated per municipality, it's calculated per county.
That's correct.
Correct. So then I contacted somebody and I asked a question, what is it? And this person, very knowledgeable in the state, says, no, it's two percent per county. Where do you live? I said Essex County in Belleville. He said, oh, that's Essex County. He said, well, probably Essex Falls, Summit, Short Hills, they're not gonna have big, and towns like that, not gonna have big. And then he specifically mentioned Bloomfield. He said, there's a tremendous amount of growth in Bloomfield. So you can't just calculate that two percent growth rate is for every municipality. You might not get some that have no growth at all. So your two percent that you're adding on here per year could turn out to be accurate because right, our neighbor next door has bigger than two percent growth rate. So that's, that's not per municipality.
No, that's per type of roadway. It breaks down into arterial, minor and major arterials, collective roadways, local roadways, and then it is by county.
And just, I'm not a hostile witness here, I like this project. It's just gotta be done the right way. And the proposal, I think this, the, that is gonna have a problem with Franklin Avenue, with the county.
Can we just do questions now?
Yes. Are you familiar with the Essex Park project down the road on Franklin Avenue that was built?
No, no, I'm not.
That's one, the county allowed them to make a cut into it.
Is that north of this site?
Yes, it's north about a...
Didn't they require a left turn lane into the site for an unsignalized intersection?
No, it's not signalized.
I know, that's correct, but they required a left turn lane to be constructed on Franklin.
Yeah, and they widened Franklin Avenue. So that's similar to what we're asking for here.
I'd say no, because it is an unsignalized intersection there where, when we get to the full build, we'd actually be looking for a signal and conduct our left turns at a signalized controlled intersection. So that's, that's the difference between those two.
That was microfold to widen it to the signal. So people get out of flow of traffic, if you widen it that ten feet, as they're approaching that signalized entrance, they can get out of the flow of traffic that's heading south on Franklin and they can, then have the light get in there. And you can have an all-green light at all times, you wouldn't even need to stop anybody if you had that ten-foot right turn light. In fact, if you went to the, from Mill Street to the signal that you're proposing, in the middle of that, you have the other entrance, correct?
That's correct.
The right turn entrance.
That's correct.
So if you add that ten-foot cutback, you're not impeding the flow of traffic, and that would accommodate both of you. You're not getting into the site, you're in that ten-foot lane, you could go into the first driveway or you can get into the signalized driveway. Would not be easy stopping, because you could just have a green arrow going into there.
You agree with that, sir? That was the question.
Traveling southbound, that ten-foot is what we would look at under that full build-out would be a deceleration lane into the central driveway. So that would get the traffic flow out of the southbound flow and allow them to enter the site. That's correct.
That's, that's wrong proposal. The other one on the Mill Street side, at some point down near Mill Street, I think ten feet, I think the object here, I propose this thing would be to eliminate not just ten feet easement on Mill Street, but to eliminate that curve. Now, granted, you're gonna take shrubbery down and so you have a sightline for the big car, but to make the road a little straighter, you know, just to eliminate. So at that point, it wouldn't be a straight ten feet all along, it would be ten feet down near the bottom of Mill Street and Franklin, but then it would be wider up there to take that hump out of Mill Street. You see the big curve?
I do understand the curve. I don't see the necessity of that really with the issue coming southbound through here. One is the traffic flow that we've heard, but is the site visibility that's created by that no longer used bridge apartment? And once you clear that out, it'll be visible in both directions as you travel through Mill, that we don't need to really encourage people to drive any faster through there.
I know that they do, and also when you got a curve like that and it's downhill towards Franklin, in icy weather, if you got a curve, it's a little more difficult to handle a car.
I mean, I don't see the horizontal or the vertical as a challenge through this on that curve.
And the other question, which you may not know, might not be your expertise, on that stretch of road, on the Mill Street side there, the infrastructure, the water, sewer lines and whatever underground lining, are they gonna be into the project from that Mill Street?
From Mill? I'd have to, I'd have to look at that, I'm not a hundred percent.
They're gonna run a twelve-inch water main through their site and bypass that intersection so that there's a water main break. They're gonna help us so that we don't close the hospital down.
But that, where is it going into the site? From where?
From Mill Street down, and it's gonna tie, go through their internal roadways down to Franklin Avenue.
So there's a present water line on Mill Street that they're gonna tap off?
There's two water lines on Mill Street.
They're gonna tap off those?
They're gonna tap off both of them. There's one on both sides of the street. There's an eight-inch on one side and a ten-inch on the other. So they're gonna tap into both so they have enough water that's equivalent to a twelve-inch line that they're gonna run through the site.
I want the location. So in other words, when you install a water line, the tap, the shuttle out is normally at the curve. Is that correct?
When you, what, you mean for the water service?
Yeah, when you run a service to a property.
This is a twelve-inch line that's going in. So wherever they, wherever they do tapping valve, there'll be valves there.
Right, isn't it normally at the property line?
That's gonna be wherever they tap, that's, there'll be a valve to shut the line on and off.
Okay, and the shore line, it goes into Mill Street too?
I think, yes, I think it goes down to Mill Street, yes. But there's a, that's the second river line there.
In your opinion, it wouldn't be practical to do this work now without those buildings now, but if you're gonna do that later, you have to create the facilities there, you're disturbing the current businesses, do all that construction down the road.
I think you stated that they were gonna do that infrastructure improvements.
I'm talking the widening of Mill Street, not the infrastructure. Do the widening, being you're doing that work, you dig enough to put sewer lines and water lines and whatever in there. You've got it partially dug up now. It would be practical to do the widening now and eliminate part of that curve. This way it's done.
Again, Chris, we don't know what the widening will be. We don't have a plan. There is no, you know, is it the first two hundred feet of Mill Street to create a right turn southbound on Franklin? Is it three hundred feet up, four hundred feet? It's gonna be a direct result of the traffic that we generate a full build-out. We don't have a plan. We don't have the ability to create a plan because we don't have the traffic generators that would justify the extent of the widening or the detailed scope of the project.
You have the present traffic study, which we who live in Belleville know, and I travel quite frequently because my son lives off Montgomery Street, which, that's how I go this morning, took my wife to Fire Moss, by Franklin, we come out, we make the right to go up Mill Street to go into Montgomery. And I testified at the last meeting, no, I didn't, I said that at the council meeting last week. My two grandkids go to Fairview School on Montgomery.
We're doing questions now.
It's just a question.
Well, the point is, I think that should be done now because later, all that construction will be done while you have two existing businesses trying to do work. You're gonna upset the site. I suspect we get a request that that should be done.
You're clarifying, nothing on Mill Street is gonna impact the businesses. We are so far remote, we're thirty feet down in grade change, any widening on Mill Street will have zero impact on those businesses.
No, our engineer testified that the water and sewer lines are coming in from Mill Street. Is that not correct?
They'll be, they'll be coming in at the upper roadways.
That's correct, they'll be coming through the actual proposed roadway through there and not a direct tap to these buildings. It would be internal to the site.
Well, again, you're doing a lot of construction, taking down the bridges, but I think now would be a more practical time to do it.
Are there any other questions?
Michael Sheldon, forty-seventh Floyd Street. I just have one suggestion to make for the planning board. If and when you compel the county to widen Franklin Avenue, might you also ask them to widen that little section of Mill Street leading out of park to Franklin Avenue? Because as Chairwoman Patty said a little while ago, you know, often during the peak of the day, the traffic backs up all the way to Union Avenue. And the reason for that is that little piece of Mill Street coming out of the park is a single lane. And if somebody needs to make a left turn onto Franklin, everybody is trapped behind them. So if you could get Joe D. to seed a little bit of the park, it would make it easier for him and his guests to get to Manina's the next time they have a fundraiser. So just something, something to keep on your mind. If you're going to get the county involved in a wholesale way to re-engineer that intersection, try to get a little bit of the park. And I think it would go a long way to fixing all the woes for that part of Belleville.
We're gonna swear you in and you're going to say that what you said was true?
Oh, sure.
Because it's not a question of comment.
Now or right now?
Got a little loose here, we're asking you questions.
Do you swear that the testimony you have already given and the testimony you will give is true, in both cases?
Yes, I do in both cases. All right, so what I'm recommending is that if and when the planning board gets to the point where the county is involved in widening Franklin Avenue, I think you should ask them to also consider widening that little section of Mill Street leading out of the park to Franklin Avenue. As everyone here is aware, that part of Mill Street backs up atrociously, and the reason is is that it's a single lane, and if someone needs to make a left turn at Franklin Avenue, I, once a week, I'm there with some staff to take them to cleromasters and use doctors, you wait there for several signal changes. So if that little piece could be widened, if the county can give you just a little sliver of the park and you could put two lanes on the north side and have a dedicated left lane, left turn, I think that would be a tremendous help to finally alleviate the traffic congestion in that part of Belleville.
So I'll keep that up for Engineering to point.
Something to file for your use.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thanks. Mrs. Higgins?
Mary Higgins. I received this certified letter because I live within two hundred feet of the proposed project. This question is about traffic, even though the letter is concerning a flood hazard area individual permit. It says here that the self-service storage facility is twenty-five thousand square feet, is that correct?
It's a footprint of twenty-five thousand square feet. It's actually, or is it a hundred thousand square feet?
Okay, so is your traffic study based on twenty-five thousand square feet or one hundred?
One hundred.
Okay, thank you.
Any other further? All right, so you know, we're gonna close the...
The only thing is, if they may want, if some people made questions and comments, any other comments?
No. A testimony I wanted, there's one piece of testimony.
You've already been sworn out, you all know, yes, we did, because you're gonna give a comment.
Okay, Toleo Del Gershelle, Eighth Road Street. The only thing I wanna say to the board is if you're going to approve this project for the two uses, that for the pharmacy, if it's gonna be allowed to be opened all night, that there should be a Belleville cop that they should have to pay for after a certain time. Because as Mr. Candy said last month, that is close to a very bad area, and that is a very isolated area at two, three, four o'clock in the morning. If they're gonna be open all night and the pharmacy's gonna be open all night, then there should be a cop station in there.
Or a tank.
Okay, because it's very easy for somebody to go in there and commit a robbery early in the morning.
We all, we all know the area, we all know where to open. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any others? We're gonna close this now. Do I get a motion?
What are the conditions?
Yeah, can we have a clarity on the conditions?
Very good.
Mr. Hurwitz?
Can we get a clarification on all the conditions before we place our vote?
Oh, you're a pride.
Sorry.
All that the conditions are, the granting of the township, the ten-foot easement along the Mill Street frontage and the Franklin Avenue frontage. At the time of any future development on the site, that there'll be an updated traffic report as per John Jar's recommendations. I guess anything that was in our report, what's the date of that, Mr. Hurwitz? I have to look it up. August fifteenth, two thousand seventeen.
All conditions and recommendations in the August fifteenth report, sir?
Yes. Just for the record, about the twelve-inch water main going through the site. I can't think of anything else at this point besides what was going on with the board.
What about the security issue, Mr. Hurwitz? About twenty-four hours in a security...
That's something the board, that would be an engineering recommendation, okay, a board recommendation.
Who said we're doing no twenty-four hours anyway?
That's, that was the proposal, Judge.
Why? Why is there no twenty-four hours warranty there?
Hours of operation. Hours of operation as a condition, Councilman?
Yes.
And your suggestion is, sir?
Six to ten, six a.m. to ten o'clock at night.
What about the drive-through?
No drive-through. It's not a white castle.
Should it park?
No, the drive-through is on the plan, sir.
No, the drive-through, you have a drive-through, but it's starting to be open after ten o'clock.
That's your suggestion.
That's my suggestion.
Any other suggestions on hours of operation?
Unless they wanna build like power pits with machines on top, in each corner.
The other thing is the sidewalk that doesn't show in the plan, that from Franklin onward to Mill Street.
We're gonna make a subject to a final plan coming to you for your approval, right?
The sidewalk is Franklin's, correct?
It's internal, from Franklin Avenue to Mill Street internally. From Franklin Avenue to Mill Street, internally. County, all Breckley Torrey Agency approvals, which is an old letter also, in fact, they get Frank's letter, denial of this.
Hours of operation, Madam Chairperson.
I believe it was six to ten that's proposed. Anyone else have any other comments about that? I think that's board desire is. No twenty-four hours? No.
We do have an extension if needed with further development. That's not a condition, that's just part of the presentation.
Well, we are making it a condition.
Future development, traffic study, which.
Okay. All right. We already disagree with the first.
But there's another problem, is the storage building's gonna be open up twenty-four hours. Whoever's there's gonna leave at six o'clock, and in the building, they're gonna have their own.
Maybe they should have security at that point?
Key or something to go in and out. And they're gonna get slaughtered when they go there at ten, eleven o'clock at night.
That's true with those storage facilities. They move Franklin Street.
Franklin Street has a person that lives on the property.
Twenty-four, really?
Yeah.
Does somebody wanna make a recommendation of maybe having security? No? So twenty-four hours for security and the storage?
Mr. Quine, clarification, our part has twenty with regard to the hours of operation for self-storage. Is it being escaped?
It's not twenty-four hours. What we testified to is that the, the actual units for the customers that have access to facilities from six a.m. to 10 p.m. seven days a week. And at the office hours, it's Monday through Friday, nine thirty to six p.m., Saturday to nine to five thirty, and Sunday, the office hours are closed. So it's not twenty-four hours.
So they can't get in there after ten o'clock?
That's correct.
Same hours as if we're going to your duct storage.
Yeah, that's fine. That's fine.
But that's why I thought it was still missing.
Yeah, that's consistent.
Yes, Mr. Wolf?
Just for clarification, Tom, you said the letter was August fifteenth?
It does, by last.
Because I do have a copy of the letters.
All conditions?
For August.
All conditions of his letter.
Yeah.
August fourteenth.
I have one, so that's report. On our side, I'll look at the long one. August fourth, be correct. August fourth, I've got the next application.
Okay. And I have a letter from Frank, dated July twenty-seventh.
That was his order of denial.
That's his own letter.
That's his own, his own letter.
Okay.
Call a motion? For all these conditions?
Call a motion to approve what the condition said forth by the attorney.
I am second. Second. Okay. Yes. Call.
Mrs. Inalde Rata.
Now.
Councilman Kennedy.
No.
Mr. Conti.
Yes.
Mr. Morse.
Yes.
Mrs. Shaw.
Yes.
Mr. O.
Yes.
Mr. Sinabria.
Yes.
Ms. Rika.
Yes.
Take it.
Thank you.
We're going to take a five-minute recess, and then we'll repeat.
Let's go to the next case. Next case is back.
She needs a break.
PB two thousand seventeen dash oh-six, KNS LLC, four eighty-six dash five hundred Geralman Street, driveway located in front of building for parking and additional parking space for existing garden apartments.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Should I open?
Yes, please.
Mr. Chairman, members of board, Councilwoman Robert Cassio, firmist Cassio, tobacco, five twenty-four, Union Avenue in Belleville. I represent the applicant in this matter, KNS LLC. My client is the owners of four eighty-six, five hundred Geralman Street, which is a garden apartment with twenty-nine units. My client is seeking preliminary and final site plan approval in addition to bulk variance released in order to construct a new driveway for one additional parking space. There are twenty-nine units and only twenty-eight spaces. My client seeking room and the additional parking space so that there be one parking space for each unit. Each rental unit will have their own space. They're one short now. The witnesses you'll hear from are Mark Denner of KNS LLC and Mike Lonzafama, the engineer and planner. Mr. Denner will give a brief history of the property and explain why he needs one more space. Mr. Lonzafama will review the location of property and describe the site. We will also discuss the parking and explain the new proposed space, where it will be located. Mr. Denner.
Please make your answer. Please tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you guide. Please state your name and spell your last name.
Mark Denner, D-E-N-N-E.
Is it M-A-R-K?
M-A-R-C.
C. Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Denner, what's your business address?
One thirty-eighth Bryant Avenue in Springfield, New Jersey.
And your occupation?
Manhasset.
And are you a member of KNS LLC?
I am.
Does KNS LLC own four eighty-six, five hundred Geralman Street?
It does.
And very briefly, what is located on that property?
Twenty-nine rental units and twenty-eight parking space.
And approximately, how old is the complex?
Built in nineteen sixty-four.
And was that built by your family?
My grandparents.
And why is it you're looking for one additional space at this time?
The last fifteen years, there has been one space short. There was a tenant that is handicapped, who was there from grandmother's time in the nineties. And we never needed his space because he couldn't drive. Now he's getting older and he needs a healthcare aid, and so he requested his space. So we have to give it to him, and we are one space short.
And each tenant has an assigned space?
Assigned, yes.
I have no further questions, this witness.
Anybody on board have any questions?
Is that the spot that's in front of the apartment building?
There's one spot there now.
Right.
We just wanna add one more.
Do you charge your tenants for parking?
No.
No, all right.
Unless they wanna somehow put two cars in each, there's no room for that, so.
All right. Question.
It's within the rent.
Fine.
I don't think anybody on board has any questions, this witness.
Thank you. Mr. Lonzafama.
Please, very pleased to meet you. You swear to the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you guide.
I do.
Please state your name and spell your last name.
Sure. Michael Lonzafama, that's L-A-N-Z-A-F-A-M-A. I'm a licensed professional engineer, land surveyor and planner, and principal with the firm of J.C. and Keller's Incorporated, two fifty-eighth, May.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Lonzafama has appeared both to the planning board and zoning board.
Here, where the session next, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Lonzafama, did you prepare the site plan for the proposed additional space?
Yes, we have.
Briefly describe the location of the property.
The property is located on the east side of Geralman Street. It is designated as lot forty-five and block forty-eight oh-one. It is approximately point eight-six acres in size. It's located just south of school number seven, off of Passaic Avenue. It has twenty-nine apartment units located on it and twenty-eight parking spaces, as you've heard before. The property is located in the RG zone, which is the garden apartment zone.
And would you, through use of the photograph, just briefly describe the property and in particular where the proposed new space will be?
Certainly.
Do you want to mark that council as?
Please.
A-one?
It's a, A-one is, I believe, a series of six photographs?
Correct. Never taken by my office on April third of this year.
Mr. Lonzafama, when you review those photographs, just please concentrate on the location of the proposed new space.
Certainly. I have produced. The center photo is the building directly off of Geralman, where the new parking spot will occur. The photograph to the left, which is designated as photo number one, is just a view, a little further to the south, to the north, and shows the entry driveway to the rear parking area as well as location of the unit that will be utilizing that parking space. To the right, photograph number three, just gives you a broader view of where an existing parking spot already exists off of Geralman Street. In the bottom portion, the center photo is just an enlarged view of where the vehicle would occur. You can see that there's existing walkways and plantings in that area. As part of our design process, we plan on reconstructing those sidewalk areas to be able to support a vehicle driving over there, creating a curb cut and a turn of the appropriate thickness. This area would be asphalted into a nine-by-twenty-foot deep space to accommodate a single vehicle. To the left and right of those lower photographs, I believe would be photograph four and six, it gives you line of sight views. This is looking north on Geralman. You can see a good line of sight. And again, on the far right corner, looking south on Geralman, again, you see a straight line, ease of sight. There's no sight obstructions that would cause anything that would be problematic for a motor vehicle to pull into or out of a parking spot at that location. It's no different than someone backing out of the residential driveway.
Mr. Lonzafama, what variance are you seeking with regard to this application for this additional parking space?
For this additional parking space, we need a variance for parking in the front yard. They were cited, I believe, by the zoning officer as not having the necessary setback, but actually I think it's section twenty-three dash six eleven, no front yard parking is permitted. As part of the application, we, you know, to construct that parking space, we are adding impervious surface here. But what we're doing in the back portion of the site, where the parking area exists, we plan on removing asphalt, so there'll actually be a reduction of two hundred and twenty-four square feet in impervious coverage of the site. So you're reaping a number of benefits because the site is already non-conforming as to lot coverage and opening space requirements. We're actually reducing those nonconformities slightly. We're bringing the site further into compliance with zoning by providing one more parking spot. Under your current zoning ordinance, we're supposed to have fifty-eight parking spaces. We only have twenty-eight, so we're getting a little bit closer.
Recording your conversation.
But in my opinion, just from a planning perspective, all of these variances could be granted under the C two criteria in the municipal land use law. In my opinion, the benefits outweigh any detriments. You're reducing the number of existing non-conforming conditions, and you're not exacerbating any of the bulk variances that already exist associated with the setbacks from the property line to the buildings. Obviously, there's no adjustment to the building. So long and short of it, in my opinion, I think this would be beneficial not only to the apartment dwellers in this complex, but to the community in general.
Just one last question, Mr. Lonzafama. Is it likely that when this apartment was constructed, that the requirement was not two spaces per unit, but one space per unit?
Most likely, yes.
No further questions, Mr. Chairman.
Any board members have a question for this witness? If not, does anybody in the public have a question or comment of either witness? If not, we'll close the public portion. And would someone like to make a motion?
I have a motion to approve it with the variance or whatever it is.
Second.
Close, call a roll.
Mr. Vinaire.
Yes.
Mrs. Inalde Rata.
Yes.
Councilman Kennedy.
Yes.
Mr. Conti.
Yes.
Mr. Morse.
Yes.
Mrs. Shaw.
Yes.
Mr. Bowles.
Yes.
Mr. Sinabria.
Yes.
Ms. Rika. Yes.
Thank you for your time, Mr. Chair.
I have a question regarding the chandelier we approved parking lot.
Chandelier?
The chandelier. I need to bring this up because other people have brought it up, so are, nothing's been done. Now, my only concern about.
You're gonna stick Frankie on it.
Well, chandelier parking lot, they haven't done anything, and they promised the residents, they said that they would put up.
Put up a wall.
Nothing, and that's not paid, nothing's done, and I was just wondering.
Make a motion, adjourn?
Second.
Thank you again for much of all the compliments you threw at all.